Consider and approve the capital improvement CIP and the recommended budget for fiscal year 20 to 2021. And the adoption of the recommended budget and establishment of the appropriation limit and related actions, or take other action to approve interim expenditures. Do we have the staff report?
Yes, we do. I'm bringing up my screen right now.
Deb, did you want to kick off the presentation?
You know, I know that was the plan, but go ahead.
All right. So good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, here with you this evening to present the final proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Before we get started, as always, we'd like to thank all of our staff for their hard work. Although Administrative Services is up here presenting this budget, this is a full-fledged citywide effort across all departments. And it's presented an additional challenge this year with COVID, trying to interact with each other virtually to get this presentation and the budget document completed to you on time. So just thank you to all of our staff. And thank you too, Deb, for her leadership and her support as we got through this very interesting budget during these interesting times. With that, we want to remind folks where we are in our strategic planning process for fiscal year 2021. Good news is we're at the bottom, which I think that means we're kind of near the end here. So the yellow box there at the bottom is today's council meeting, where we are hoping to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2021. When we look in terms of how often we are back to council reporting on the budget, this is our normal schedule, which means we were here speaking to you just a month ago in May, going over the proposed budget, which was printed on May 1st. This evening, we're here in June presenting the final budget to you. We will be back at the latest in November to present first quarter to you. But with all the uncertainty around COVID-19 and the potential for impacts to our budget, should any major changes occur, it is likely that we'll be doing some additional reporting to council between July and November. We're back to report on the first six months of the fiscal year, which we call our major financial report, usually late February to early March. And then back in May to present our third quarter report for that fiscal year. And then again, we start the cycle again with our proposed budget. So this evening, what we are wanting to cover is really to go over what has changed in the general fund since last we were here in May presenting the budget to you. We're also going to go over at a summary level any changes to all the other funds within the city's budget. And then we'll break those changes or reductions down further by department. And then we'll remind you of any current budget requests and any changes to those requests since our May meeting. We will go over the capital improvement program, which is also before you this evening for approval with this item. Cover any issues, challenges, and additional staffing that is being requested. Go over the recommended action and then close up by telling you when you would expect to hear from us again regarding the budget. With that, we'll kick off with the general fund. And as always, we like to tell folks the presentation is generally focused on the general fund, because this is where council has the most discretion. The bulk of the funds, over 70%, are tax-related. And so again, this is why we have the major focus here, where a lot of our other funds have restrictions on how those dollars can be spent. If you may recall, when we were here about a month ago, we had talked about our proposed budget, which was printed on May 1st. And we talked about the estimate of beginning this fiscal year 2021 with 17.5 million in unassigned fund balance. And unassigned, again, means that it's not earmarked for any specific purpose. So this can be used for any purpose. Again, not earmarked for anything in particular. We take that 17 million and to it, we add revenues of 79.5 million. We subtract expenditures of 82.3 million. And that gets us to a net impact to our general fund unassigned fund balance of 2.8, which would mean we would estimate ending fiscal year 2021 at 14.7 million. Since we published that budget, we've made some additional changes. 0.4 million dollar reduction to revenues and an additional 1.8 million dollars to expenditures. And when we take those differences, those changes, and we apply them to the budget that's before you this evening to be adopted, that brings our revenues to 79.1 million, our expenditures to 80.5 million. And that impact of fund balance goes from 2.8 to 1.4 million. But it's important to note this 1.4 million does not include the $800,000 or five, holding five positions vacant, that vacancy savings is not built in, as we haven't identified those five positions yet. So we couldn't go in and unfund them from the budget. But we anticipate being able to meet this $800,000 number, but it's just currently not listed in the numbers. So overall, what we're saying now is we anticipate ending fiscal year 2021 with estimated unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 16.1 million dollars. And we really think that number's going to be closer to 16.9 million when you factor in the $800,000 savings. And again, I want to point out, this is just for the general fund. All of our other funds have fund balance in them as well. So when we're talking about the 16.1 or 16.9 million, that is only in the general fund and is our unassigned or unearmarked. So it still leaves our things like our economic uncertainty reserve untouched, our CalPERS reserve untouched. So with that, when we look at this new general fund budget before you this evening of 80.5 million, we always like to call out our largest expense area, which is our contract services at 27%, followed closely by our employee compensation and benefits, which together total about 26% of the total general fund budget. When we look at the general fund budget by expenditures by department, you'll see our Public Works Department is 29% and about 23 million. So the largest portion of our pie is here in Public Works in terms of our costs. Now, when we go in into a little bit about how we're going to be presenting this this evening, I'm going to go over at a very high level and summarize for you by department and by fund and expenditure area, what changes have occurred. Zach Korach, the Finance Manager, will come in right after me and provide a little bit more detail by department. But if anybody is looking for kind of the line-level detail of the reductions, those can be found in attachment E in the staff report. So with that, since the proposed budget across all funds, we've made reductions to the expenditure side of about 7.4 million. It's a number down here in your lower right-hand corner. And you can see that the largest reductions are happening in the special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and the general fund. But overall, the two largest departments taking reductions on the expense side are really Parks and Recreation and our Public Works Department. Parks and Recreation, it's really mostly driven by COVID-19 impacts. So our facilities are closed due to guidelines by public health. Certain programs either can't continue or the structure of them has changed in such a way that has resulted in us reducing expenses related to those. On the Public Works side, it's really mostly related to pavement. And you're going to see this as we kind of show. This next slide is going to show these reductions by the by the expense object. But overall, we're looking at reducing the budget by about 7.4 million dollars. When we look at it again by the account classification, still focusing on the expense side, you can see our largest reduction here is in contract services. This line here is reflective of contract services. And again, the largest portion that you're going to see that is in our enterprise fund. And this is really reflective of changes in Parks and Recreation. The other large portion that you'll see is in capital outlays. And you'll see that number at 2.2 million. Again, that's mostly reflective of changes in our pavement maintenance program that Zach will cover later in the presentation. Now, when we take a look at the revenue side of the equation, we see we're seeing some additional revenue reductions. So this breaks out for you, the overall $400,000 reduction in the general fund. You can see a bulk of it is coming again from Parks and Recreation related to COVID-19 impacts. And again, you'll see it again in Parks and Rec on the enterprise fund here. Overall, we're reducing revenues by about 2.5 million dollars. And we'll go again, we'll go over. If you want more detail on what specific accounts these are being reduced, and that can be found in attachment E. But again, what we're really seeing here, the bulk of this $2 million is really a reduction in Parks and Recreation again, due to impacts from COVID-19. When we take that same, looking at revenues again, but seeing it break out by the expenditure, sorry, the revenue category. Again, charges for services is going to be see, you're going to see the largest area here. 2.2 of the 2.5 is coming in charges for services. Another area, although it's small, but I want to point it out, is reductions here in special revenue funds. This is just taking a more conservative approach to tax revenue related to the highway users tax and the gas tax. And so we felt would be just be a little more prudent to lower those revenue estimates just a little bit more. And that's what's reflected there. With that, that's kind of a high-level summary of the changes since the proposed budget. And I'll hand it over to Zach Korach, Finance Manager, to walk you through some of the details by department and more of the service level impacts.
All right. Thank you, Christina. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. Zach Korach, Finance Manager. The first view we're going to be looking at is the all-fund summary. And then we'll follow that up with the individual department requests and the budget reductions by department and account classification. So again, the total, the final recommended expenditure budget shown by department across all funds is 109.7 million dollars. Again, consistent with previous pie charts that we've shown, similar to the proposed budget study session, we're seeing the largest department being Public Works, followed by law enforcement, non-departmental, mostly consisting of inter-fund transfers out from one fund to another. And then next followed up, Parks and Recreation, community development, and so on. We have a same view, this time broken out by by object or account classification, the 109.7 million dollars. And again, consistent with previous pie charts that we've looked at, most significantly employee compensation and benefits, next followed by contract services, and then the cost allocation charges and transfers out. Again, when we're looking at transfers out and cost allocation, those have zero net impacts to fund balance within the city as a whole. Those are inter-fund charges between departments, division programs from one fund to another. So first jumping into council and commission's budget, we see community funding requests. The Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the applications that were received on June 4th. And resulting from their review, they had come to a determination and a recommendation to to approve for funding Tier One. This was the top three highest-ranked organizations, including Breathe California, West Valley Community Services, and UFRAT Museum. The total funding request for those three organizations is $34,000. The Parks and Recreation Commission also approved a second tier. That would be the the second three highest-ranked organizations that had applied. But the caveat was they were only approved if city council were to determine that the funding in the general fund was available to extend the additional $30,000 that those second three highest organizations, ranked organizations were requesting. Again, Elevate the Future Rotary Club and Deer Hollow Farm were requesting a total of $30,000. So if city council were to approve both Tier One and Tier Two, the total community funding would be $64,000. But one thing that we do want to note is that the Cupertino Historical Society is again, a reminder that they are not subject to the community funding application process. And they're not subject to review by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So $20,000 has been added to the final proposed budget. And that was effective in fiscal year 1920. The next slide here. One moment while it loads. I apologize for any delays because I'm... Okay, the next slide. The slide before you here is a three-year look at community funding awards, starting with fiscal year 2018, 19, followed by 1920, and then the proposed budget in 2021. And looking at the far-right column, we've sorted this by tier or the ranking of each of the organizations. Again, Tier One was approved. Tier Two was approved if funding is determined to be available. And then Tier Three were rejected applicants. We've also included, if you'll note my cursor, Cupertino Historical Society, although again, not subject to the review process. We did include it within the community funding budget. We're looking at the total dollar amount for all applications. This is not going to be reflected in the budget unless council were to approve all of these tiers. But the total amount that was requested was $136,000. What we want to call out is understanding the change between last year and this year. Again, in fiscal year 2019, 20, a total of $109,800 was awarded to for community funding. This year, if Tier One and Tier Two is approved, a total funding amount of 64,000 plus the $20,000 for community, for excuse me, for Cupertino Historical Society would be included in the community funding budget in a total of $84,000. I will pause there if there are any questions.
Question that I have, Heart of the Valley. What is that group? The one at the very bottom, 7,000, Heart of the Valley?
I don't have their application from last year in front of me. I wonder if if someone from the Parks and Recreation Department might be able to better answer that question?
Yeah, and I would like to know what Breathe California is.
I think that organization, they fight for, against the tobacco smoke second. Yeah. So anti to advocate for less smoking.
How about the Cupertino Symphonic Band? Is that high school-related?
I think that's an adult band.
Say again?
I think that's an adult band.
Yeah, that's not a school band, I don't believe.
But again, they didn't ask for funding this year, right?
Right.
But yes, they're 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 an adult band.
So they didn't ask for funding this year?
Right, because if you look at the right-hand column...
Request. Oh, no wonder. Yeah.
Well, I don't know if this is the right time to discuss, you know, this, but I'm a little upset about Deer Hollow Farm getting nothing and Breathe California and the Museum of Art getting, being in Tier One. You know, I just think Deer Hollow is a lot more important. That's where they, you know, mainly directed towards school-aged children.
So did they do a ranking? I thought that the Parks and Rec Commission last year had a ranking system. And they really spent time on this system. So how did they make this decision?
Sorry about that. I was going to say, I don't know if somebody's here from Parks and Rec that can speak to you that was at that commission meeting or if somebody of a Parks and Rec Commissioner is available. But you are correct that they did come up with a ranking system last year that I believe they used pretty much a similar, if not the exact same, system this year. So I don't know if somebody's available to speak to why Tier One, what the difference between Tier One and Tier Two, and why some were placed in One versus Two.
Is there like a criteria they use available somewhere in the staff report?
I'm sorry. I think that Vice Chair Stanek was going to be available to answer any questions on this item.
Yeah, I do see her in the participant, so I will allow her to talk here.
We don't have the criteria that they use in this.
All right. Welcome, Carol.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, there were criteria. And, you know, we looked at how there there were a total of 100 points that you could give out. And there were various categories. And, you know, some was how does it line up with our community, our city goals? How broad a reach does the event or the project have? And so what happened was, you know, everybody did their own ranking. And what you see there is the ranking from 1 through 10. There were only 10 applicants this year. And so this is just sort of how it fell out of the numbers that came through from the averages from the ranking. And then when we discussed, there was some, you know, there's understanding that there are budget constraints this year. And so there were some on the commission who just said, let's do the top three, just being very conservative. And there were others that thought that we should do all of them. So this is basically a compromise that the commission came to that said, okay, we've got our Tier One that we'll recommend. We do think Tier Two has has merit, and we want to show those to the city council for their review. And since we don't have that much insight into the totality of the budget, we just felt we wanted to give you those options. But we felt that all of those things, at least in the top six, were valid community benefits for us. So whether it's number two or number three, you know, those got in the top, they said top tier, as we'll say. And the next group were still of high interest. And that's why we wanted to show those to you.
Mayor, I would suggest that we, rather than commenting on this and trying to deliberate on this now, that we first take public input, as we should.
Right.
Come back, come back to this, right?
Right. So this item has, you know, a great deal of, there's how many different things here? Let's, I think, before we take public comment, why don't we go through B and C as well?
Sure. Yeah, it's just the principle that we ought to hear from the public before we deliberate.
But can I at least ask? Can I, I'd like to ask next time. I think we had this information last time. The ranking, the criteria that's used to do do this ranking should be made available. He should be part of the agenda packet. So it would be nice if that's included, if we can include a statement from the Parks and Rec to explain a little about their process. That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, can we do B and C of number 21? Number one? So we can do these and, you know, I think I can let people comment on 1, 2, and, well, I guess it's 1, 2, and 3 separately. This is too much for one, one item. So where are we now? We did... Can we just listen, have number? I think we did A and B, didn't we? Can we look at, see the conversion of limited term to permanent?
Yes, I think there's just a little bit more in the presentation. We're going to walk through the reductions and service level impacts.
Sure.
So moving from city council and commissions to the administration department, we're looking at the list of special projects and any changes from the printed proposed budget to what city staff are recommending as part of the final proposed. So the only change on this specific slide is the Climate Action Plan that was approved as part of the city council work program, a reduction of $110,000 or a total budget of $100,000 for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay.
We'll also be looking at the budget reductions by account classification for each department. I want to call out that the the bulleted notes to the right of the chart are not going to correspond directly with each of the account classifications. The underlying details between the, under the account classifications consist of hundreds of of various accounts that were reduced and for a number of different reasons. And what city staff, their goal was, was to summarize some of the, some of the larger categories and present them before you this evening. So I won't read through through each one of them. But most significantly, in the administration budget, we see the $110,000 reduction for the Climate Action Plan. There's also a significant reduction in city manager contingency. And that's really because due to how the city manager contingency dollar amount is calculated, it is dictated by the total base budget within the entire general fund. So when the general fund budget expenditures are reduced, the city manager's contingency is is also reduced correspondingly. Looking at law enforcement, the only change here was a recalculation in the in the contingencies for a nominal amount of $118. But we do want to call out, as was, as was presented during the proposed budget study session, with no change to report, but an increase in the law enforcement contract year-over-year of $714,000. And that is consistent with the CPI plus two increase or 5% increase over the previous fiscal year.
Okay.
Moving into innovation and technology, the only change on this slide, the only change is, excuse me, is the Pilot Trash Collection Work Program item that was approved for removal, $25,000. There was also a revision to a new request in fiscal year 2021 for IOT for analytics. That was an increase of $5,000 to the original request. Looking at the Innovation and Technology Budget Reduction by Account Classification, excuse me. Christina, I apologize. I seem to be having a bit of difficulty with navigating.
Okay, which are you trying to be on the Innovation and Technology slide or Admin Services?
Right here, right here. Hopefully it stays. So the the largest reduction is in software and training costs within the department. We also see again, the reduction from the city council work program for the trash collection pilot. And an overall reduction in various software acquisitions, aerial acquisition, DocuNav, and technical analysis of current software that the city is utilizing.
Okay.
So looking at the Administrative Services Budget Reduction by Account Classification, the largest change here was reduction for recruitments and overall materials supplies and internal and external trainings and conferences. The Parks and Recreation budget is being reduced by a total of $2.5 million. Some of the notable items would include the senior center and the travel program, neighborhood events that would no longer be taking place over the summer. $265,000 reduction in part-time staff. And most notably, a $1.4 million reduction for Sports Center Contract Services. This is referring to the lifetime tennis contract. And then various recreation classes that will no longer be be able to be offered. And as Christina had mentioned in one of the previous slides, again, the total reduction in revenues of $2.46 million is is less than the the total, total amount of expenditures that are being reduced. Looking at Community Development Department, again, no change for their Marina Plaza. The $50,000 is funded through pass-through revenues that will be received from the applicant. But one change is the residential and mixed-use design as part of the city council work program. It was not included in the printed proposed budget. And that is one of the changes, is adding that item to the final proposed. I won't repeat any of the information. There's a reduction in on-call contracts. And again, the residential mixed-use design was offsetting that decrease. Moving into Public Works, there are no proposed changes or recommended changes to to this particular slide. We can move to the next. And here we see one of the most significant reductions in the city's budget as a whole. And that would be for pavement maintenance, concrete maintenance, as well as annual sidewalk grinding projects of just over $3 million reduction. And again, 100% of those reductions are taking place in special revenue funds. We'll see that in just an upcoming slide. And if I recall correctly, all of these proposed reductions were actually... And if I recall correctly, all of these proposed reductions were actually included in the presentation uh, at the proposed budget study session. So no changes here other than the reductions that you see before you. Um, one item that I want to draw attention to however, is the vehicle replacement line at the bottom. It is proposed to be or recommended to be reduced by $584,000. And a significant portion of that reduction is a $400,000 vector truck, um, asset acquisition. Um, staff are, um, going in with an alternative, um, alternative method of, of leasing uh, vector truck as part of a continued cost-sharing agreement with other neighboring jurisdictions at a cost of $50,000 per year. And we'll see that reflected in the next slide. So when we see this increase to contract services of $45,000, um, the majority of that is, is the $50,000 proposed or recommended lease agreement for that vector truck service. And the reductions in capital outlays, special projects, again, primarily attributable to the, um, to the reduction in annual pavement. Non-departmental is, is recommended to be reduced by $172,000. And this is again, due to a reduction in the overall budget across all funds. Uh, the lower that a, the lower the, the respective funds budget is, the less need there is for general fund operating subsidies to those funds. So as a result of, of all the budget reductions that are being presented this evening, the general fund is receiving relief, um, or no longer needing to transfer those operating subsidies. And with that, uh, we have the capital improvement program and I will, uh, pass it over to Michael Zimmerman, our CIP manager.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members.
You know, be, before you, I, we're on number 21 dash two now, right? The capital improvement program?
That is correct.
So, um, let me see if, let, let's take public comment on number one because there's too much here to limit it to one public comment for all three numbers. So before we.
With that, can we do that, if we're going to do that, can we, uh, would you mind if we skipped ahead to just talk about the staffing? Uh, and we can discuss it in total or do you want to just take it, sorry, in the pieces?
Oh, sorry. Which one is that?
Uh, the limited term conversion to a permanent position.
Oh, I thought, okay, yeah, what happened to that? You, we skipped over that for some reason.
Yeah, it's, oh, it's actually right in between. It's right after this section. So I thought if we could just kind of discuss that and then can always come back.
Oh, okay. So on the agenda, on the agenda, it's before this, so, um, it's before capital improvements. So yeah, why don't you do two, number one, see the conversion from limited time to permanent for senior management analyst? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, go and do that and then we'll take public comment. I already see four hands raised.
Okay, uh, perfect. So as you may recall, as part of the proposed budget, uh, that was printed and that was presented, we had originally had, uh, a recommendation to convert five limited term positions into permanent positions as part of the proposed budget presentation. Um, staff had recommended to only move forward one of those limited term conversions, the senior management analysts and administrative services, uh, because that term is ending as of June 30th and to defer the other four remaining positions and bring them back closer to their end date. Um, and that would give us time to, uh, understand what was happening in the economy and in our budget. Um, so that council could make a better informed decision, uh, at that time. So right now, the recommendation is only to take one, uh, senior management analyst and that admin services currently a limited term position and make them a permanent position.
Yeah. And, and what is their job function?
Um, they handle most of our open gov, uh, website. They do our retirement, uh, forecasting, uh, and modeling uh, as well. They work as part of the budget team, uh, here with us. Uh, they put together our, uh, open gov stories and they also serve, uh, to assist the finance division, um, on projects there as well.
I see. Okay.
And their limited term appointment is up, which date?
Right, I understand. Okay. Um, let me go over and see if anybody from the public wishes to speak. I see four hands raised. Um, we'll start with Peggy. Welcome Peggy.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Mayor Scharf and, um, council members and staff, I want to thank the staff for reducing the budget, uh, at a time when we need it. And I want to thank, uh, Mayor Scharf, City Manager Fang and Roger Lee for explaining the library extension project that, uh, appears in the previous funding. That's already been funded and will be completed. And I also want to thank, uh, Ms. Alfaro Fararo for her presentation and, and it's a lot of numbers, but the explanations that she provided helped a lot. And Parks and Rec for providing the two-tier, uh, grant approval structure. It would be nice in the future if the evaluation criteria and the scores, uh, would also be included. And with that in mind, Deer Hollow Farm, which is in Rancho San Antonio open space, we, the city of Cupertino, are blessed to have Rancho within our boundaries. It's used by so many different interest groups. I feel if they need help maintaining their facilities, the least the city could do is to help them. So if there's even a partial amount of money that could be found to help them, I would encourage the council to approve it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Peggy, next we're on to Catherine Moore. Welcome Catherine.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf. It's Kitty and I just wanted to comment on, uh, the Deer Hollow Farm defunding. Um, if that is going to happen, I, I really hope that it doesn't. I've been going to Rancho since 1995. And, uh, what they were proposing was essentially, you know, doing maintenance and upkeep there. And, uh, anyway, I'm in full support of that. I have a question about the Hyde, um, work. This was something that Zach had mentioned. Could you maybe explain what, why the city would have that in the budget and why it's not part of CUSD? And then lastly, I'd like to see the vehicle budget one more time, if that was possible. Um, and can I, may I have the, the, the question answered, uh, while I stay online or do I need to?
Sure, yeah, we can answer those. Zach, um, can you talk about the Hyde funding?
And Christina, this is on the public works special projects. And I may have to, I may have to call upon Public Works Director Roger Lee.
Okay, okay. So it says Hyde Middle School friends, dense repairs and there, and there, I thought I saw it show up twice. Maybe I did not.
I believe, I believe there may have been a second, um, a second request if we check the.
Yeah, it was the irrigation pump and, uh, my, my question's just, you know, why are, why is this in our budget instead of, um, the CUSD? It's more of a curiosity question.
Yes, good, good evening. It's Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. This is one of the nine sport fields that the city maintained. So the water system is part of ours to maintain.
Got it. Okay. And may I see the vehicle budget? One more time, please. And if you can call it out quickly, I'll, I just, there it is. Are we looking at the vehicle replacement? That's really high. Is it, what, could someone explain that?
So the, uh, the way the vehicle replacement budget works is it factors in the current year anticipated um, annual depreciation expense. So based on the, the current vehicle, the city's current fleet, the amount that is anticipated to be depreciated, that is the amount, um, that dictates the, the annual budget.
Right. So I'm looking at an accounting figure. I'm not looking at acquisition of vehicles and that type of thing. This is an accounting.
No, apologies, apologies for the confusion. This, this actually is the acquisition side of it.
Oh. Okay. So, uh, could someone explain what type of vehicles you're acquiring? Are you looking for EVs? What, what's going on there? Are these old vehicles that are, uh, you know, out, need to be taken out of service because they don't, they don't look good? Or they're just not operational, that type of thing?
Yeah, this is a, this list of vehicles represents about a third of what we normally be replacing if, if we hadn't had any concerns with the economy. That's for replacement of vehicles that, that are antiquated, um, experiencing greater, greater, um, frequency of repairs, um, and are just really beyond their, their serviceable life. Um, but it is a reduction of what we normally would be doing.
Great, perfect. So again, just like the budget that we were looking at last night with the planning commission, that the, this, everything's been pulled back and you've reduced it as much as possible. That's what I believe I'm looking at. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine. We are on to Connie Cunningham.
Good evening. Um, thank you. I was very interested in the, um, particular uh, grant that was put in tier three, which is from Santa Clara County Audubon Society. And I see that it was put in tier three. I, I was wondering very much why that would be there, uh, when you're talking about the match of interest and so forth. I know that as part of the city's 2019, 20, um, work program, that we're creating a bird safe and dark sky design guidelines, protects the government, the public health and wellbeing and facilitation of habitat friendly developments. Um, we're so fortunate that, uh, the Santa Clara County Audubon Society is located right here in Cupertino at McClellan Ranch. And many young people become acquainted with wildlife through their education programs. Um, so I, I was just wondering, uh, why there, what the program was or why it didn't make it at least into tier two. Thank you.
Okay, um, Orin. Welcome, former Mayor Mahoney.
So are we going to answer, um, question? Connie's question about Audubon Society. But we can.
And then, you know. The mayor can direct questions and responses.
Yeah, let, let's go to former Mayor Mahoney. Welcome.
Uh, wait, we responded to Kitty, so how come we are not responding to Connie?
Frankly, in my view, that was also out of order. We're supposed to take public comment. And then we as members of this board, of this council can, can ask questions of staff. But that's, that's how the process works. We're not playing 20 questions with every caller.
Welcome, Orin.
But if a council member is interested in the answer, maybe we should respond now instead of.
Why don't you write it down and at the end of public comment, we can go through and answer them.
Okay.
Orin, are you there, Orin? I can't unmute you. Okay, yeah, he, Orin, you have to unmute yourself too. Okay, there, oh, I thought I had you.
Is it star nine or what do they have to do?
No, he's not called in. He's, he's on his computer. Um, but I cannot unmute him alone. I think this, this way, we both have to unmute and he's not unmuting. So let's move on to David. Oh, there's Orin.
Oh, can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. I'm actually believing in it, I'm, but, but fine pressed in the scarras. I bought a Verizon phone because it doesn't work up here, so that's what I am. Anyway. Um, on that, first of all, thank you for all your hard work on this budget in these very tight times. I will echo what I've already heard, listening about the fact that the park and rec process could be clearer. Having sat in on our process, um, it was a little obscure, the different ranking systems and whatever. Having said that, I'm, I'm happy that, uh, Cupertino Rotary made it to the top six. Um, as you probably know, if you read that, that our input there is associated with the fall festival and some particular activities that we do there, we do not know at this time. Obviously, we're not going to have a full fall festival to do that. September would be, um, I don't see that happening, but, excuse me, we could just scale down, the health and safety fair, bike rodeo, et cetera. Uh, no matter what happens, um, with the fall festival, that money that we raise in a fall festival all goes to charitable projects. So with regard to COVID-19, we've already allocated to six different organizations, uh, special COVID-19 money. Um, West Valley Community Services, if you guessed why, Home First, um, uh, our daily bread, all, all kinds of activities that are directly associated with COVID-19. We also partnered with a club that we have in Taiwan that has been asked for COVID-19 to the church department, to El Camino Hospital, um, to SUNU and other organizations. So, uh, needless to say, any money that the city gives us will go directly to helping those that need in the community. And we'd also like to continue to put on whatever elements of the festival we can put on to bring people together and learn new things. So thank you very much and I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Orin. Next, uh, David.
Hi, hopefully you can hear me.
We can, go.
Yes. Hi, my name is David Fung. I currently serve as a planning commissioner, but today I'm speaking to you as a board member of Friends of Deer Hollow Farm. Uh, we've submitted the grant proposal under the community funding grant program. I had two points that I just wanted to touch on. As you may have noticed when you were reviewing the packet, our application was not included. Uh, you know, there's a technical error. Uh, on Saturday, I notified the staff of the air and wrote to y'all directly via email with a copy of my submission that, that has been corrected and our application was included in tonight's written communication packet. So thank you to the staff for that. I'd like to also touch on a question that was raised by Commissioner Shu during the Parks and Rec deliberations last week. Uh, with regard to the grant that Deer Hollow Farm received last July. She asked why the project was not completed in the current year. I was present, but the meeting format they used didn't really allow me to respond at that time. Uh, so I just wanted to touch on that and clarify that our white barn project, the renovation project, which this grant is written for, is a really large project, a total cost of about $450,000. This includes building a new foundation and structural improvements for the entire, um, for the entire barn. And this has always been viewed as a multi-year project for us. The current year grant money has been applied for pretty extensive pre-construction work, including environmental and historical studies and a creation of a full set of project plans, which we're currently using to get permit, uh, they're in permit review at the county. Uh, we actually expected construction work would begin before the end of this fiscal year, but construction and plan approval are both functions that were shut down because of, uh, COVID. So we're, we're planning a little bit of catch-up. Uh, in a normal year, we host about 100,000 local visitors at the farm with about 12,000 people who've, uh, self-identified as being, uh, Cupertino residents. This major improvement to our facilities is an investment that'll help keep our farm vital for the enjoyment of many, many families in our community for decades ahead. The last renovation that we saw on this, um, project was in the 1950s. So I want to thank you and I also actually want to thank the other community members tonight for their support of Deer Hollow Farm. Cupertino, city of Cupertino has been a long-term supporter. We really appreciate it. I'd also be happy to answer any, uh, questions that you have during deliberations. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, David. Um, next we have caller 4927.
Hi, it's Jennifer Furlong with the Historical Society.
Okay.
Um, I'm just calling, um, to express our, um, deep felt appreciation for your willingness, um, to continue, uh, the relationship that we've had with the city of Cupertino since our founding in 1966, shortly after the founding of the city. And, um, we appreciate the city's participation in our documenting the COVID-19, our, our documented history project. Um, and we also would like to invite you to participate in, um, a racial justice reading group that we've just founded. And, um, check out our reading list that we posted on World Cat and all of our, our social media. Um, I greatly appreciate and our board, um, greatly appreciates the continued support, um, of the line item. And, um, we really, uh, have been very impressed with the city's response to COVID-19 and, and all of the hardships that we've all been enduring. And this funding greatly assists our mission of, um, bringing his. greatly assists our mission of bringing history to the present and bringing history to our community and continuing our, our growth and mission. And I'm just calling to again, express our sincere appreciation.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Now we are on to Vanessa. Vanessa, are you there? I'm trying to unmute you. There you go.
Okay, are you, are you able to hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. And good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. We appreciate this opportunity to introduce you to Breed California and its seniors Breed Easy Program. My name is Vanessa Talania. I'm a Breed California's health educator in charge of senior health programs. Breed California is a century-old association that fights lung disease in all of its forms and works with its communities to promote lung health. So its key goals have been to establish tobacco-free communities, achieve healthy air quality, and fight lung diseases like asthma, COPD, and tuberculosis. Current lung threats which are being addressed are COVID-19, vaping among teens, wildfires, and the need to move to cleaner vehicles and less miles driven. Because seniors are a population so vulnerable to lung disease, we seek $4,000 of funding to better serve Cupertino residents over 60 years of age, to support health and wellness programs for 300 seniors and an additional 3,000 Cupertino residents at senior centers in other community locations in Cupertino. So the project goal is to increase seniors' understanding of health risk, improve access to prevention, increase the level of safety in seniors' homes, increase access to smoking cessation assistance for seniors, and increase competence, confidence of caregiving serving our seniors. So some of the services that we offer are, for instance, health education, health education on a variety of topics delivered in various languages. Such as COVID-19 medications wisely, is it cold flu or pneumonia? Talking with your doctor, indoor air pollution, the dangers of tobacco and secondhand smoke, benefits of exercise, tuberculosis, sleep disorders, nutrition, COPD, home energy use, RSV, and financial literacy. In addition, we all provide health screening such as pulmonary function testing using spirometry, pulse oximeter screening, measuring the oxygen saturation of the blood. And we also offer smoking cessation assistance designed for them. And we provide home visits for assessment and education of environmental lung health risk and fall prevention. And to add on, we also provide respiratory therapy equipment for needy seniors such as peak flow meters, spacers, and CPAP machines, masks, and hoses. Lastly, we also provide informal and referral information on a variety of lung issues from diseases to housing problems such as secondhand smoke, so we're to get assistance with utilities or transportation. We also serve approximately 3,000 Cupertino residents of any age with information or referral assistance at health fairs and community events. Services are available full and free of charge. Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Next, Henry Sang. Welcome, Henry.
Putting that you had, oh, we're not, this is not the point to show the slides. That would be after the CIP. The, I saw that there is an item for a new podium for the, the, I guess this is for community hall. And I note that in the last planning or planning commission meeting when they were talking about Westport, the developers said that they might not be able to save those beautiful big oak trees. I'd like to suggest that we have the developer to save the wood. And then for projects like a podium or special things for our city or for artwork, that that holy wood be used. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Henry. Uh, next, we have Arjun Gupta. Welcome. Arjun.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I would just like to, I'm part of Elevate the Future and I'd like to briefly explain what we do. And so as part of.
I'm sorry, what, what, which group are you?
Elevate the Future.
Okay.
Sorry if that was unclear. And just to explain briefly what we do here is we basically help local small businesses as they try to recover from COVID-19 by providing them with, with free websites. And so we're currently working with various small businesses and we've already helped some already. We also recently partnered with Kiva to assist these small businesses in microloan financing. And so we are really dedicated to helping these small businesses. And we basically, this funding is really critical to helping us set these websites up. And we've already, already implemented the technical skills necessary and we have people building these sites. The second part of this is that we have these websites designed by students. And so students get to go through a web design course and then apply it. So students are learning and we're helping our community at the same time. And furthermore, I wanted to briefly say that even if we don't get funding, we would really appreciate the city's support in any way in terms of letting more small businesses know about this. Because many small businesses want websites, but just don't know about this. And we're aware that they want websites because we've seen something similar implemented in Canada during this COVID-19 time. So I just wanted to say if we can get support in, in any way through letting more small businesses know, that would really be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Josh Sello.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. This is Josh Sello, the Executive Director of West Valley Community Services. Thank you for your support during the coronavirus pandemic. As you all know, since I've spoken here before, we've had about a 500% increase in new clients, about 800 new client households since March 16th and a 200% increase in demand for rental assistance. Like all businesses, we're facing the challenges of an increased demand. All businesses like what we do at West Valley Community Services, your support helps make the work possible. Tonight, we're in front of you for funding related to a building expansion. Our building was built 20 years ago and even when it was built, it was too small to serve the number of people that were coming all those years ago. Now we're seeing well over 4,000 folks a year and our building just isn't, does not have the capacity to meet that demand, especially in the times of social distancing. We've already received preliminary approval from the planning department to make the needed improvements to serve this increased demand and have reached about 77% of our fundraising goal and plan to start work in the fall. Hopefully tonight you'll support the recommendation from the Parks and Rec Commission to provide some additional support that will help us make it closer to that goal so we can get this project started. I'm here if you have any questions and I thank you for your consideration of this request.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Um, so I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. Um, now Lisa Warren. Okay, this is it. Raise your hand now or forever hold your peace. Lisa, you'll be the last one. Welcome.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I'm seeing this list and I see Silicon Valley Jewish Film Festival. And I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure if that's ever been contributed to before or if the city is supposed to be contributing money to, what do I want to say? Different religions of any kind, or that's a normal thing. That's all. I see that it's a tier three, which means it's rejected. And I'm just wondering how it made the list and if it's been on the list before. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Lisa.
Was that okay?
Yeah, well, okay, so that's it for public comment on this. We will bring it back to the City Council for discussion now. Um, who would like to go first? Can someone stop sharing their screen? That's not necessary yet.
I'll, I can go if you like.
Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, you know, we can, I'm sure we can ask detailed questions about the criteria and about all these organizations and try to rethink what our Parks and Rec Commission does. But since we asked them to do this work, I would respectfully defer to their judgment. If you think, you know, we ought to take tier one only, then take tier one and be done with it. If you think we want to be more generous and, and that's in your, you know, in your, in our purview, then take tiers one and two. I don't think it's appropriate for the council to be redoing all the work of the Parks and Rec Commission. If, you know, if, if, if that's how it is, I don't see why we should exercise, put, put them through an exercise only to just overrule them. So that's where I am. I continue to object to one nonprofit in our city having a line item in the budget. I think it would be much fair to have them all go through the same process, but you know, nobody's bitten on that yet and I understand that. But I, I would just beg you to think about these in tiers and respect the work of, of the commission. Otherwise, next year, maybe we just all have it come to council and we forget about any recommendation they want to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Leon.
Oh, I, I think John's hand was up first.
Oh, I wasn't even looking at hands. I was just going around the room.
Before I raised my hand.
Yeah, I was just going around the council.
There was, I, I forgot one question and that is to, to David Fung's point. Was the Deer Hollow Farm application not in at the time the Parks and Rec Commission came to their determination or, or what about that? That, if there was an error made, whose error was it?
So it did go before the Parks and Rec Commission. It's when we uploaded the budget item for this council meeting. The link that should have gone to Deer Hollow went to a different application. And so as soon as we found out about it, we went in and switched it and then added the correct application.
But as regards the Park and Parks and Rec Commission evaluating this, did they have all the information?
As my understanding that, that they did have the correct application.
Okay, David, did you want to say something?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, the Parks and Rec Commission did have the, the full application that you have today. It was just, this was no mission in the council packet. There was also just to the, I want, I just wanted to thank the city staff. There was actually follow-up information as well regarding, you know, how we were applying funds with COVID and, and things like that. But that material was all available to Parks and Rec.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Rod, are you done? Oh, Leon, you were going.
Yeah, that's essentially just where I. I don't have a big preference between tiers one and tiers one and two.
Okay.
John, do you want to go first? John? Okay.
You know, you're.
Would you like to go first?
No, we've got your picture on the screen. Go ahead.
Just go, Leon.
Yours, okay. Okay, so I have a question regarding the purpose of community funding. I looked at the application that we have and we say in the application, the fund should be for one-time project-specific needs and not ongoing operational costs. So I, I heard that for Deer Hollow Farm, there were people who were questioning, this is, there would, the funding was not for a one-time project. It's an ongoing, maybe 10-year project that then in that case, it doesn't seem to fit the category for community fund. And also it says in, in our application that you should have more than 75 of the requested funds allocated for direct service costs versus administrative costs. And then it just talks about things like events, how many people we serve. So it's more like for community events that really reach out to people, not like a project that's a construction. So I'm a little confused on what the purpose. And I think we, maybe the council wants to clarify that in the future. Because right now it seems there is a mix. There are some events, there are some projects, the West Valley one is a project. The Deer Hollow Farm one is a project and even the Euphrates Museum one, it's more like an operating cost. It's not really a event they are hosting. But I know that we have been funding them, so I'm not going to challenge that. But another thing is, I think the reason we, I, I think it's, it's important, it doesn't matter whether the recommendation was made by the Parks and Rec Commission or not. We as a council is a decision-making body under Brown Act. So our decision needs to be made so that the public who wants to know would know how we made that decision. Therefore, if we only have the final recommendation without the process, we are cutting the public out of the process. That is not a democratic process. So on principle, I would like to see the decision-making process that come, go with the recommendation so that the recommendation is supported. And now someone mentioned the Audubon Society. I couldn't even find the application because it was rejected by the Parks and Rec Commission. Therefore, the application is not even included. So I couldn't even check what did they propose? How come it was tier three? And for, for California, initially I thought, yeah, also I'm not so sure why it was rated so high. And now because I read the application, I find out, oh, they are reading, really providing some very important services. So it's important for the council to understand what's being proposed and so that we can understand the recommendation and then we can support that recommendation. But blindly supporting a recommendation simply because it was made by another body, I don't think that's a proper thing for the city council to do. So as for tier one or tier three, tier two, it seems to elevate the future is a very interesting program and only $3,000. I see that their $3,000 they request for are all for costs to build a website for the businesses. So if we are not doing both, both tiers, I would like to see that way at least fund Elevate the Future in addition to tier one. Um, yeah.
Okay, John.
Okay, I, I think it's best to just throw that slide up with the community funding and that makes it easier for what I, I would kind of say. For the slide, the community funding backup there?
No, Zach's working on it.
Oh, okay. Next, next slide previous. Homens. There's one more slide, you know, the one that had all the lists. Tier one, two, there you go. Great, great. And so what I'd like to say kind of relates to these, you know, I mean, even in these really challenging times, you know, where there's a lot of uncertainty with the city revenues and how things are going to play out. For the most part, these are really community-type projects that really benefit the community, the residents. I, I am very happy that Parks and Rec does, you know, make a priority out of bringing this to us. Of course, I would like more transparency, like we have heard, but that's not the topic for tonight. The specific ones that, you know, just, I think we really would be doing a disservice to not do them. The Deer Hollow Farm, West Valley Community Services, the Audubon Society, Historical Society. Well, gee whiz, you're kind of covering almost all of them. But the sum total is, is really not that much when you look at our overall budget. So I would like to suggest that we fund tier one, tier two, and then leave the tier three as if funds are available and that we hope Parks and Rec will do everything they can to, to economize and facilitate. When, when a particular group or entity loses any source of income, you know, it has a tendency to demotivate and then we wind up with, with less Uh, uh, things for the community and that's what we're here for. So again, I would like to say I support these and to the greatest extent possible. Uh, tier one, tier two, you know, say we fund them, tier three, if funds are available and let Parks and Rec. Uh, try to manage and economize. So that, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Darcy.
Looking at this chart, I would also be in favor of. Uh, more general funding, tier one is fine, tier two is fine. Tier three, I would suggest if funds are limited, that we think about. Funding up to fifty percent or at fifty percent initially, um, up to a prorated amount as to what is. Uh, feasible in the budget. I, I do support Historical Society as an ongoing line item. I think that there is a, a fairly significant connection between uh, the Historical Society. And the city in the sense that there is a museum in our Quinlan Center that. Uh, rotates displays. Uh, it has for the last year, uh, held a display of. Uh, computer history, uh, including the first, uh, Apple computer. And so I think that it would be a, a good idea to keep that relationship going as well. Uh, one idea I will throw out there with regard to Historical Society is that. Perhaps, um, and, and this is not something that we would decide right now, of course, but. Uh, if we do have this as a line item and we have that financial interconnection between our city and the organization. That we think about perhaps designating a council member, uh, as one of their committee's assignments to sit in on. Uh, perhaps on a quarterly basis, Historical Society, uh, board meetings. Uh, just to keep apprised of what's, what's happening. I think those details can be worked out over the course of. Uh, and of course, our, our committees are not, uh, made for another half year for the calendar year twenty twenty-one. So that, that's where I stand on it. Um, I would be fine with. Uh, any and all of these, um, you know, very, very deserving organizations receiving funding. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Darcy. So while I have some issues with, um, the choices, you know, I kind of agree with Rod. We. You know, we've tasked Parks and Rec to do this. If we, if we want to do it ourselves in the future, that's fine. I wouldn't mind taking it from Parks and Rec and doing it ourselves, but um. You know, I appreciate the effort they put into doing this. Um, as others have pointed out, this is not a huge amount of money. Um, even if we funded all the tier twos, that would add thirty thousand dollars. Um, you know, to, that we'd have to pay and, um. So I'd be happy to fund the tier ones and the tier twos, even though, um, I may not agree with the exact ranking.
That would be, that would be a total of sixty-four thousand dollars.
Right, so what, what's the situation with our budget? I mean, can't, I mean, can we afford that?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you can, it just means you'll use a little bit more of estimated, uh, unassigned fund balance to do it.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, I really don't want to defund. Friends of Deer Hollow Farm. I think that's just an excellent program. And I realize, you know, that the money does go to address. Um, infrastructure needs, you know, with their buildings, um. You know, rather, you know, rather than ongoing programs, and, and I think that's fine. Elevate the future, I don't know much about, but I'm glad the person came to speak about it. I am a little concerned, did anyone come here from, um, the Museum of Art? To speak about it, but we've been giving them ten thousand dollars, you know, every year. I mean, when, when are museums even going to be able to be open now? But again, you know, I don't want to si- sit here and second guess the, um. Parks and Rec Commission, so I would just, you know, I, I would move to fund tier one and tier two.
I'll second that. So I mean, I guess what we're doing, we're, we would adopt resolution two zero dot zero eight four. Establishing the operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty-one and specifying that we want to fund. Tier one and tier two in the community funding.
Uh, could I make one last comment then?
Sure, go ahead, John.
So, um, one last suggestion then, you know, since, since it was. Clearly said that the Autobahn Society is in our community, our city.
Yeah.
What if we move Autobahn Society to tier two, to the amount of ten thousand dollars rather than the fifteen? That's what they got last year. I mean, if it was in a different city or something, but it's actually in our city and for us to. To, uh, not give them a little money to be working with, so. So I would suggest that, maybe you can make a, maybe that can be a friendly, uh, uh.
I mean, hon- honestly, John, we're already giving them, uh, below market rate rent. Uh, on the building they occupy here, so that, that itself is an amenity, as we do for the Historical Society.
And the rotary too.
Not.
Waivers on the park fees and videos, a lot of things too, right? It's the same, but we're still funding rotary, no one is objecting.
We can, we can dispute any of these things. My, my overall thing is, you know, let's respect our own commission. We appointed these people. This is important.
Question, because it was raised that the museum is not open, right? So, um, am I to understand that? We are asking them to submit a budget at the end of the year. That if there is, if they don't have line item budget, uh, expense report. That expense this amount of dollars, then they will not, uh, use, use up the full amount. Is that how it works?
Christina, can you speak to any expense or reporting of the grant dollars that we give them?
Um, yes, so what will happen is in July, we are going to be, uh, so this process just recently, um, changed. Previously, under the old community funding, uh, if they were applying for new grant dollars, they used to have to tell us what they did with the old grant dollars. Under the new community funding policy in July, uh, staff will have letters out requesting the report back from those agencies that receive funds. To give us a report breakdown of what they spent those dollars on.
Okay, great. So if they don't use it up, then we, we won't have to spend that much. That's good.
And then one other thing just to add, Christina, can you speak to, um, I just want to make sure that. That the council is aware, the Santa Clara County, I'm sorry, Santa Clara Autobahn Society. This amount that they ask for through the grant process, isn't that in addition to the contract that we have with them?
Uh, yes, so this would be in addition to anything we normally would have with them, whether it's that, um, dark sky or any kind of, um. Space they might have within our city, this is in addition to that they would be asking. I just don't, I just want to make sure it's, it's not confused with that. We do have a contract with them.
I see. But right now, because the application is not attached to the. Agenda, so I couldn't even see what they proposed to do with this fifteen thousand dollars, right?
Ten thousand.
Um, fifteen thousand, ten thousand for last year.
Oh, I'm looking, no.
Yeah, is it?
Ten thousand, ten thousand.
I'm, I'm kind of in support of what Darcy was saying because. I see that we have our sister city here too. That's also an organization in our city and I understand they are trying to start. This is kind of a new one, uh, that's for India. We have a lot of people from India and. They are trying to start with some kind of festival. Um, so some startup funding would really help them start a new festival, I guess. So Darcy's idea was to fund the health of those in tier three.
So are you done?
So, do we, do we, do we have support for, uh, funding tier one? And two plus fifty percent of tier three?
Yes, I, that, I was saying I support all three tiers. I was saying one, two, absolute. Three with, uh, funding available, but if we want to say fifty percent, yes, sounds good.
So, so we have a replacement, uh, um, motion? To fund tier one and two plus fifty percent of tier three? And John second? It's actually Darcy's motion.
No, you're bringing it. No, I'll, I'll support it. So why, why don't you bring it, John second it?
It's true that it's small amount of money and then we are hoping a lot of volunteers. That they are putting their time to, to want to serve the community.
Okay, just make the motion.
Okay, motion made.
I second.
Can we call the question on the substitute motion?
Sure. So we vote on the substitute motion first, right?
Yes.
All right, go.
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
No.
Councilmember Willie.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
No.
Motion carries with Sinks and Sharp voting no.
So just for clarification purposes, that was approving tier two and then fifty percent of funding for tier three?
Yes.
Correct. All of tier one, all of tier two, fifty percent of tier three.
Perfect, that's what I have.
So I guess we don't vote on the first motion, right? Because that's no, no point anymore. Okay. All right, let's go on to part two of item twenty-one. Um, the capital improvement program. Go.
Evening Mayor Sharp, council members, Michael Zimmer and CIP manager. Um, this is a recap of what we presented on June second study session, and these are the nine projects that we're proposing for next year. Uh, next slide. It includes, um, one significant change from, from the, next slide, go ahead, Zach. It includes one significant change from the study session on six-two. Uh, we have combined two projects, the Quinlan Community Center Emergency Generator Project and the Quinlan Community Center HVAC Equipment Evaluation. Into one project, the Quinlan Community Center Multi-Site Sustainable Infrastructure Upgrade. And we've increased the dollar amount by approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Again, we, um, are eligible for a public safety power shutdown grant of two hundred seventeen thousand dollars. And that has been secured, and we are also eligible for Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant of up to two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, and that's where the multi-site sustainable infrastructure, um, component comes into play. So it's primarily for Quinlan, but if there's any money left over, we can apply it to other sites, um, throughout the city.
And why, why did it go up by a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, again, it's, it's for the, um, additional sites and for the additional, um, alternative. Um, and evaluation of the different fuel sources, the different, um, you know, battery storage or solar options that, that we can consider. Um, Andre, from the Director of Sustainability, could you add any information? Might explain the difference?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and, uh, council. So at the CIP study session, staff presented two projects which were brought forward. And, uh, there's, at the study session, council requested that staff take another look at the cost to study. The heating, ventilating, air conditioning equipment, as well as to, uh, consider. Uh, fuels other than diesel, uh, or fossil fuels for the emergency power needs at Quinlan. Um, and staff also noted that there are several outstanding facilities needs at Quinlan, including. Um, the HVAC equipment, which is, uh, well beyond its normal useful life. Uh, and is the single largest consumer of, uh, fossil fuels in the city's, uh, real estate portfolio. Um, so Public Works and Sustainability came together to assess what options were available, um, given those comments and the needs. Of this facility, uh, and being mindful as well of the extreme, uh, need to be cautious with capital, uh, funds. Uh, so today what we're requesting is, uh, a net ask of just under thirty thousand dollars. To combine these opportunities to take advantage of several, uh, several synergies. Uh, first, we can address the city's million-dollar-a-year utility budget. Uh, we can significantly reduce those annual expenses. Uh, we can address the greenhouse gas emissions from, uh, Quinlan, which is the single largest emitter of greenhouse gases out of all our buildings. And, uh, to your point, Mayor, uh, the funding, uh, really is driving, uh, we think. Uh, towards this direction, uh, specifically the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant of, uh, two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Staff, staff proposed to follow, uh, the lead of, of both these granting, uh, requests to combine those needs with efficiency. And, uh, emergency, uh, power needs, uh, otherwise known as resilience. Um, and so the request today is in that, um, thirty thousand dollars to, as seed money. To get us started on a design delivery process to combine those needs.
All right, go, go ahead.
David Stillman, can I ask you to chime in here on the, uh, fencing improvements? The Regner Creek Trail.
Thanks, Michael. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, David Stillman, Transportation Manager, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, great. Okay, um, so Regner Creek Trail, uh, is point eight miles in length and has approximately sixty-one hundred feet of frontage. To a total of eighty-three homes. Uh, of these homes, thirty-three properties are immediately adjacent to the trail. Uh, not including the homes on Lozano and De Palma Lanes. Uh, the trail is about one to two feet away from, uh, these backyard fences. There are forty-two property, uh, properties on the opposite side of, of the creek from the trail. Uh, and those properties are on average about forty feet away from the trail. Uh, the total length of fencing of properties abutting the trails is approximately twenty-six hundred and seventy-four feet. And for properties on the, um, opposite side of the creek from the trail, approximately thirty-four hundred and twenty feet. On the next slide, I'll discuss the outreach that's been performed. Uh, letters have been mailed to, uh, the seventy-five residents on two different occasions, once in October and again in June. Uh, the specific outreach has occurred with the eight residents living on Lozano and De Palma Lane separately as they received some, uh, unique fence enhancements. Due to their, um, unique situation. But to date, of the seventy-five residents mailed, uh, forty-five have responded to staff. Uh, twenty-eight of them conveyed their preference or their preferred fence as a wood fence or a composite fence. Uh, fourteen residents conveyed that they prefer either a concrete or a block wall. Uh, and three residents conveyed that, uh, they don't want a new fence at all. Uh, thirty residents have not responded yet to either of those two mailings. Uh, the next slide, uh, please will discuss the budget. Uh, and I'll refer you to a desk item that was provided to you that provides some clarifications on, on the budget over what was provided in the. The staff report. Uh, so per the council direction received in September of twenty nineteen, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars was allocated for private fencing enhancements. Uh, based on a current design, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been estimated for enhancements to the Lozano Lane and De Palma Lane. Properties, which results in two hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, currently available for the rest of the trail properties. Uh, that two hundred and five thousand dollars remaining, um, is sufficient to replace about thirty-seven hundred feet of. Existing sixty-one hundred feet of fencing with a standard seven-foot-tall wood fence. Uh, this is adequate to replace all wood fences on properties immediately abutting the trail. Uh, and a portion of the properties opposite the creek from the trail. Um, another way to state, state that equivalently, um, is that, uh, staff has received requests for some type of new fencing, be it wood. Uh, composite or concrete from rep- residents representing about thirty-five hundred feet of fencing. So the two hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, remaining in the budget would be sufficient to provide every resident who has asked for a replacement fence. Uh, with at least a new wooden fence. Um, at the June second, uh, council study session, council proposed increasing the fencing budget by up to two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so the next slide, um, I can give a frame of reference for what we provided with that additional budget. Um, if, uh, if council directs staff tonight to further enhance, uh, the fence to be better sound-absorbing. Then an additional three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars would be needed to provide double-sided. uh the fence to be better sound absorbing, then an additional three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars would be needed to provide double-sided with mass-loaded vinyl for the properties immediately abutting the trail and a standard wooden fence for all the properties on the opposite side of the creek. Um, if all the fences along uh both sides of the trail are replaced with just a standard seven-foot-tall wood fence, then an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars would be needed.
Oh, David, um.
Yes.
Can I interrupt since um, why don't you explain what the MLV actually is? Cause I know what it is, cause I, you know, it was an idea I had, but I don't think the rest of the council knows what MLV is and the sound absorption properties.
Sure, sure. Let's see if I can, if I can explain it. So mass-loaded vinyl is a very dense um but relatively thin material that um actually comes in large rolls. Um, you can get it in eighth of an inch thick, quarter inch thick, but it's very heavy, very dense. Um, um, that kind of looks like, you know, comes in a carpet roll and basically you can apply it to a surface that uh would enhance the uh sound attenuation properties of of the surface. The the mass, the the density of of the product is what helps really attenuate the sound over over, say, standard.
Right, plus it closes any holes, you know, the wood is not, so, um, there's gaps in the wood when you do a fence.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And you can eliminate the gaps to some degree with with overlapping boards, but but yes, providing the mass-loaded vinyl um eliminates gaps and um gaps are one of the the major contributors to sound seeping through a surface uh or around a surface, no matter what it is. So eliminating gaps goes goes a long way towards.
Right, and and you would not see this material, it would be sandwiched between two layers of uh wood boards.
Yeah, and that would and that would be mostly for um aesthetic purposes so that you wouldn't see it. The second layer of of wood wouldn't really do anything additional to attenuate the sound beyond what the mass-loaded vinyl does. But but you would do that just so you wouldn't see the the product, which is which is kind of this matte black flat product, which wouldn't wouldn't look very good either on the trail side or on the on the property side.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, sure. Um, so the uh CIP budget that's been considered this evening doesn't include any additional budget for the Regnar Creek Trail. So if council wishes to make any changes to uh what was previously authorized, which I described earlier, um, then it would need to happen this evening. So uh, that concludes my presentation on Regnar Creek Trail.
Okay, let's continue with item two now.
I believe that wraps up item two.
Oh, it does. Okay, great. Um, so you know, I think we kind of, um, you know, I'm not happy about spending the extra money, but I think we owe it to the residents um that live along the trail when their houses back up directly to it on um. Uh, sorry, now my line's going blank. Um, it's not La Palma, right? It's um.
Lamar?
Lamar.
Lamar, sorry, yeah, Lamar. So, you know, it's a lot, but I would kind of think we um, you know, we owe it to them. You, oh, you know, we we should be going to public comment now, actually, before we ask um, before we come back and discuss this. So let let me go to the public comment. I have four, five hands raised now. Um, six, seven, eight. Oh, my goodness, okay. Um. All right, this will be a while. Um, we'll start with um Connie Cunningham, welcome. Oh, allowed to talk.
Mayor, could could I ask during the public comment, maybe we should could get the uh unshare the the slides so we can just see.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate your taking the public before we weigh in.
Right, Connie, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, my first question on this is that mine is an overall for the um, and I was reading the staff report when I when I wrote it. Um, so I wasn't quite sure if this was the right place, but I would like to give it uh if this is appropriate.
To give what?
Never mind, I I'll just, I'll just uh send my thing here. I'll just say my piece, okay?
Okay.
And Kirsten, I'm sending something for you to put on the the panel there, if you would just put that on there when it comes in. So, I'm Connie Cunningham with the Ha- Housing Commission, lived here for thirty-three years. And I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and I do thank you, the staff, for their excellent report on the on the budget. Um, by resolution dated June fifth, which I had talked about earlier, the city demands that Black Lives Matter. And Kirsten is going to put the entire um quote up there, so I don't have to read it to you again, but it has to do with equity. And experiencing homelessness falls disproportionately on the black community. That is not equitable treatment, and housing, I consider, a human right. As noted in the Cupertino Courier last Friday, solutions are being considered for the encampment on Wolf and Two Eighty. I thank the city manager and staff for their work on this critical need. Upon reading the staff report on pages nine and fourteen, I see that there is an opportunity even within these trying times to start work on larger ideas. I urgently call on you to consider a new project investment to address housing solutions for unhoused residents to be taken from the capital reserve. Investing in such a project now will reduce the funding required for future needs of unhoused residents. And also Cupertino will serve its own long-term financial interests by helping residents get back on their feet. The staff report, Capital Projects, on page nine says, if FY twenty twenty to twenty-one proposed CIP projects are approved, approximately one point seven million dollars in capital reserve fund balance will remain. And it is to the city's credit that on page fourteen of the staff report, it can say that the general fund is well-positioned to absorb the temporary decline and withstand the economic recovery period into the future. I urgently call on you to consider a new project investment in our city's future. Provide new housing solutions for our unhoused residents, and I thank you very much for this time.
Okay, next is uh Emma Sheeran, welcome.
Hello, Mayor and um and council members. I also want to thank the staff for their report, especially David, for his thorough research on um and continued work on the Regnar Creek Trail issue, which is what I am here with you to speak about today. There have long been, um, has long been dissent from the residents whose homes face the trail on the trail, and I am so glad that um the improved fencing is a suitable compromise for them. I want to strongly urge the staff, um, I'm sorry, the city council to adopt the proposed, um, the proposed budget increase. Um, and in fact, as long as the Regnar Creek Trail remains funded. Um, as previously mentioned, at numerous city council members, um, biking is and walking are incredibly important to the local Cupertino community. The Regnar Creek Trail will be crucial for library parking mitigation going forward, especially as for the previously mentioned library expansion. If we want to keep library field and not pave that for a parking lot, we need the Regnar Creek Trail funded and approved as at tonight, as it has been multiple times at city council members, at city council meetings in the past. Thank you so much.
Okay, next is um David Ranny. Did I pronounce your name right?
You did, but it's actually his wife Suzanne.
Oh, okay, hi.
Um, thank you, City Council. First, I want to give a shout out to Deb, our city manager. Um, I have been contacting her with some things that I had concerns about, and she is just great. I live along the Regnar Creek Trail.
I brought up the library specifically.
Oh, can someone, Emma, I'll mute.
Important to the Cupertino community.
Emma, you need to mute yourself. Okay, there you go, okay. Sorry, continue. I'll reset the timer.
The Regnar Creek Trail. I would like to ask the city council to add additional funding to give those who live along the the trail the option to have a cement wall, like what the city put up for the residents who live along the entrance to Creekside Park. I've spoken to these people, they absolutely love that wall, and it makes them feel safe and comfortable in their home. Although I know it will be expensive, I think it is worthwhile to provide for those who live along the creek. Although we will all use the trail, we will live, we who live along the trail will live with the impact of the trail. And as we know, our city has changed. Um, and down where we live is where the majority of um the transient population is. Um, and I also wanted to comment, the city did not offer the option of a cement fence. I did go around and contact my neighbors, I spoke to nineteen of them. Sixteen of them said that I, on Lamar Drive, sixteen of them said they prefer a cement fence. Also, a seven-foot fence is not high enough. That will not provide um the safety that would allow me to feel comfortable. And um, again, I just wanted to reiterate that I would like to have cement fencing, like what leads into Creekside Park. I know it's expensive, but I think that it's worth the money. Especially, like I said, everyone will be using it, but we will be paying, um, we will be living with the consequences of that trail.
Okay, thank you. Um, Peggy Griffin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, City Council members and staff, um, I want to encourage the city council to fund the additional privacy fencing improvements. Um, if it's cement, so be it. If it's the vinyl, so be it. I think that once you put that money in, it's done. So make the residents feel safe and comfortable and supportive of this trail. I think it would be money well spent. Also, um, I think it's very, uh, as far as park amenities, I think it's very cool that when the playground equipment is being upgraded, it will be all-inclusive. As an aunt of an autistic person, I thank the Parks and Rec Department for considering this. Um, the project justification does not mention equity across the city. I understand that equipment will be replaced oldest to newest, which makes sense. But please, I ask the Park and Parks and Rec Department to keep in mind that there are fewer parks on the east side, so fewer park dollars will be spent, which will exasperate the problem. With regard to BlackBerry Farm Golf Course, parkland is very limited and precious. It's a precious resource which we will need even more as our density increases. Do not ever consider putting housing on this land, ever. Um, if that means protecting it with a conservation area, please do so. As far as street lighting installation, I don't know how you um reconcile the difference between dark skies and constant glow of streetlights. Um, I support the dark skies, but I also understand the fear that some residents have about having dark streaks, and and I haven't seen anything that reconciles that. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Peggy, next we are on to Jian He, welcome.
Me myself. Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Uh, it's really late now, and thank you so much for all this good work. So my name is Jian. Uh, my family have lived in Cupertino for fifteen years, and I served on the advisory board of Walkabout Cupertino for six years. So tonight, I speak on behalf of Walkabout Cupertino, more than two thousand members, to thank you all for all this hard work you are doing during this tough time of COVID-nineteen and for coming up with solutions to overcome challenges of budget planning for our city. So so glad to see this presentation about fencing, and I think it's really great idea to make all the resident along the creek uh to feel to feel safe. So I think um the the decision is up to you, but I think we heard so many supportive voices about that. But also heard, uh, last meeting, um, our city staff planned to hold another voting in fall uh this year, twenty twenty, to approve the design uh for this Regnar Creek Trail. So, um, this is going to be a third time for this project to go through such a time-consuming process of debating and voting. Because from two thousand eighteen to now, and Regnar Creek Trail has been put through two such processes, I personally invest the time, energy attending both meetings from early evening to past midnight. I also spoke twice to support this project, but with thousands of supporting petitions already proved, we we really have a overwhelming number of supporters. So, um, I think I sent you email today about the the map, um, for all the petitions. You can see uh our supporting petitions grown rapidly within a year, and our walkabout community also grow a lot. So so thank you for both years to build this trail uh uh along the Regnar Creek Trail. And and that will make really positive impact. I just hope you can keep the commitment. Uh, I also, I noticed all the news going on, I can see on the street and on road. Due to COVID-nineteen, many people choose to bike and walk more often to reduce the stress of sheltering place. So this trail will really make a com- uh impact for our community and provide a convenient and safe crossing point and avoid high-speed streets with very few crossings. So, um, also students later on, when the school really open up physically and that you can bike safely and walking safely around the trail. Um, I know, um, now, uh, we we have a lot of uncertainty, but we know at least, uh, we have uh eight thousand residents around there, will get get around easily on bikes through the trail to visit parks and shops. So I know, um, we understand our city may have a budget concerns, but there are a lot of grants available to help pay for the trip. I hope we can have some committee and staff will will uh do the same, uh, just like they did for Stevens Creek and the BlackBerry Farm Trail. Um, because they they actually use the grant money to cover a majority of the fund. Um, so please keep your commitment, as you voted in the past, to build this trail uh according to all the uh requirements and the city from the city and resident. And so I think a lot of families will use it for many, many years to come. So thank you for all this important work you are doing for our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Paula Wallace, welcome. Let's see, where'd you go? I'll unmute you. I think you need to, okay, there you go.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing my comment. I'm a great supporter of the Red Knod Creek Trail and all biking trails. And I thank you for supporting it back in September. I'll leave it to you all to decide whether the additional funds for more improved fencing is a wise use of uh city dollars, uh, and people who have done the studies. But uh, please, let's push forward on this bike trail. Now, more than ever, is a time to champion and support bike trails, because people can't go to the gyms. Lots of people are avoiding public transportation, and uh, May nineteenth, New York Times article said that uh bike sales are up dramatically in the last couple of months. So people are biking more than ever, and we need to get these trails opened so people can bike safely around the city. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Okay, thank you for being brief. Yeah, bike, you can't buy a bike these days. Um. I will, next is Sammy Lane, welcome.
Yeah, hey, thanks, uh, Mayor, thanks, uh, council members. Um, I also want to be brief. Me and my family have been supporting the trail from the get-go. I'm really glad to see the process move forward. It's been a learning experience for us to see how this uh process gets made. Um, however, uh, for the residents uh and fencing needs, um, I'm also voicing my support for providing the privacy. Um, so if the council has the uh funding available to provide the noise-abatement options for the uh for the fencing, I'm also supporting of that. Uh, that's all I had tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, next we have Siraj Dalvi, welcome.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, Kirsten, i- is it possible to display the slides that I had? And while you pull that up, uh, I really want to thank the council members for listening to the residents living close by to the trail and considering the additional measures. Uh, I want to reiterate that my purpose here is not to question the trail getting built, but accepting that the trailer is is built and just trying to get an appropriate privacy fencing for us. Uh, so, uh, I wanted to talk about the STC ratings and what.
Oh, wait a second, I don't see the slides up there anymore. Um, Kirsten, can you put them up? Okay, there we go. All right, continue. I'll restart the timer.
Okay, I don't see the slides yet, but I'm.
Oh, they disappeared again.
Go ahead and I'll and I'll find it.
Okay, okay, now it is. So, uh, I wanted to talk about of what role STC plays in understanding whether the sound isolation is good enough or not. So STC is a standard of number that is used to rate how how well wall partitions reduce the sound transmission. And the higher STC numbers over here mean better sound isolation. This, the scale is not linear, and and I I wish the slides were up so I could explain, but the difference between thirty-five and thirty, for example, is pretty significant. Uh, again, I had to go back to the table and.
Yeah, hold, um, Kirsten, what's happening? Okay, now I see them. Don't make, don't do anything to make them go away. Okay, now I see them. Don't make, don't do anything to make them go away.
Okay, so
Okay.
So the STC, so the ta- this table is from Wikipedia. It shows like what STC is and and what what impact it has, right? Like, for example, twenty-five is normal speech can be understood, whereas thirty-five is loud speech is audible and it goes up to around sixty where it is almost impossible to hear anything. Uh Kirsten, if you can go back to the next slide. So the the proposals are are over here, right? The first one is the concrete block that is uh next to the Creekside Park. And it is it is pretty costly uh but the STC ratings are extremely good over here and the lifespan is really good. The second option that has been provided was the seven-feet single-sided wood fence, which is e- extremely cheap, but it doesn't even have an STC rating. Um and then the third option that was provided by uh the city was a seven se- seven-feet double-sided wood fence. Now, the STC rating over here depends on the on the width of the MLB. So if the width of the MLB is one-eighth inch, the STC rating is twenty-six. But if the width of the MLB is one-fourth inch, the STC rating is thirty-one. So that that increases the STC ratings. But i- if you see, the noise isolation has improved, but not significantly improved. Um we look, we tried looking at any other, are there any other options available than MLB which might be which might have a better lifespan? And one of the things that that we uh we looked at was precast concrete. Now, these are not big solid concrete blocks, but these are precast concrete uh panels which are around like two to four inches thick, but it is made of concrete. And they are not as expensive as the concrete block, but they give a superior uh sound isolation over here. So it's, for example, over here, the eight feet of the eight-feet precast concrete and we got the code from American Precast Concrete over here. Uh they had a quote of one fifty-seven dollars per square feet, per linear feet. And that had a a pretty good STC rating of thirty-five. Now, I understand that it's not as good as the concrete block, but I I believe that this is a good enough compromise from um without using an MLB kind of a material which does not have a good lifespan. So I I would urge the city to look at these kind of ratings uh before making a decision because uh a- as we are seeing, there is not a lot of difference in the cost, but there is a big difference with respect to the sound isolation and the lifespan of the material. So I I would really urge the city and city council to look at the available options before making a decision for the residents. Again, I thank the the city and ci- city council to reconsider adding budget for this. Uh one thing that I wanted to also ask was uh I've been raising a concern about a seven-feet fence since I have a two-feet, two-story house. Uh can the city also consider eight fence, eight-feet fences where wherever they are necessary? That's all I have. Thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you. Um now we are on to, okay, we are um Eric Linskog, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sharp and
Hi.
Some members. Hi. Uh I'm Eric Linskog. I'm a Cupertino resident and a member of the Bike Ped Commission, but I'm here speaking as myself. Uh speaking in support of Regnar Creek Trail. Uh the Regnar Creek Trail has been approved now many times and is fully funded in a proposed budget. This project provides very important low-stress connectivity for transportation and recreation between Civic Center, Library Field, Wilson Park, Creezer Park, and with its on-street continuations to Cupertino High and Main Street. A vocal minority of residents that are against the public using this public land are now arguing for additional improvement to the fencing along the trail. Even though the trail has passed their envir- an environmental review and no sound issues has been found. Thus, these improvements are not required. If the property owners want additional improvements, they need, as all property owners, take responsive responsibility and fund those improvements on their properties themselves. That said, if the city council wants to prove some additional funds along the lines proposed by staff, that is also an acceptable solution. This minority of property owners keep up bringing up perceived negative impact for their properties. However, the property owners along Furland Drive will have the trail on the other side of the creek, so they will be very little, very little impacted. The property owners along Lamar will essentially have backyard access to Wilson Park, which should be a great advantage. Along the Palma Lane or its extension partially onto public land, the property owners are already using this trail and thus seems more than fair that they share this public land with the public. These aspects are not always mentioned. In either case, at the end of the day, this is public land that the public should have the right to decide on how to use. I thus urge the city council to approve the budgets as proposed and go ahead with the construction of the trail as already decided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Next we are on to Byron, um so I'll butcher your name, Ravigno. Let me allow you to talk.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you, uh mayor and council members and staff. Um I just have two issues that I wanted to discuss and it's um I think important sort of as an overview of thirty thousand feet. Uh first, I want to thank the city staff for writing grants and successful funding of six point two million for bike ped projects in this city. This amount, as you can see, dwarfs our CIP budget funded by city taxpayers. This was possible because the city has the Community Driven Bike Ped Plan adopted by council in twenty sixteen. I understand that our bike ped plan is up for renewal next year and the current bike ped commission voted not to take up the next revision to the community plan. The council should ask the DPC to start work on this important project so that more grants are possible in subsequent years, thereby saving city taxpayers money. My second point I want to speak to is um what I would call perennial complaints by some council members in these publicly televised meetings about prioritization of bike ped projects. In the study session on six-two, I listened to two more councilmen who joined and to state that they wanted information from city staff on the priorities. I would ask council members to sit down with staff privately and agree on a clear delegation of authority in these matters. Up to now, city staff have delivered to council completed staff work given their best advice. Council wants multiple options for prioritization. To debate in council, then tell the staff to produce alternatives. But quite frankly,
Excuse me, could could you speak up a little bit? Yeah, we're having trouble. Your audio is breaking up.
Oh, is this better? I'm closer to my computer.
Oh yeah, that's much better.
Okay, well, I'm I I just frankly, I'm I'm not quite sure why council would want to get down into the weeds on pri- prioritization of individual projects when staff is responsible for outreach to the entire community on these matters. And I I'm just observing that I think the process is inefficient and it isn't working for anyone. Those of us supporting the Community Driven Bike Ped Plan adopted in twenty sixteen find that we constantly have to stand before you again and again regarding decisions already made. And I I think that that's a sad course of events. Um on on Wednesday, June tenth, Councilmember Chow sent an email to Walk By Cupertino regarding the CIP stating, quote, "I'm not looking to defer or defund any of the thirty, other thirty bike projects," end quote. This was followed by her conflicting statement, "But I believe that the staff should provide sufficient information to the council to make decisions instead of providing only limited information." So the council has no choice but to agree with staff recommendations. Reprioritizing necessarily requires either deferral of uh defend, refunding or deferral something, otherwise, why do it? So I I I just find this process glorious and not um serving you or us. Um and and if you met with the staff and determined what their delegation was and then take their advice or ask for multiple choices, we would not spend so much time in these meetings.
All right, thank you. Finish up because we're almost, you're almost out of, you're way over time, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um next is Helen Wyant, welcome.
Muted. Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so good evening, council members and staff. Um the last time I spoke to you was last September on the day that you unanimously approved and fully funded the Regnar Creek Trail. I was there because I strongly believed, and I still do, that the trail is of great benefit to Cupertino residents, both individually and to the overall walking and biking network of Cupertino. Over my forty years here, improving bike safety and walkability, extending bike paths and taking cyclists and pedestrians away from the Russian dangers of traffic have been ongoing priorities uh for our community. The Regnar Creek Trail is another key step towards those goals and it's supported by a majority of Cupertino residents. I talked to so many of them um while collecting signatures in support of the trail. Uh most people were enthusiastically welcoming of um having uh safe off-the-street route to school for their children. They love the idea of taking a walk or recreational bike ride away from traffic noise and congestion and they were happy to have a convenient off-road connector uh route to the city center. And yet, I've recently become aware and rather surprised that even though the project was approved and fully funded, that anti-trail residents have continued to speak out against the project. Uh I know that their voices were heard loud and clear and staff had worked extremely hard to mitigate concerns before the project was approved. Um and as you all know, the council voted unanimously to proceed um while adding a hundred fifty thousand for fencing beyond the staff's recommendation. And yet, there's continued opposition while the majority of residents in Cupertino is under the assumption that the trail project is approved and progressing. And now we're talking about a concrete wall and spending more than was initially authorized. I'm frankly very concerned that these increases and these changes could derail the approved project. Um so just to summarize, on September eighteenth, twenty nineteen, I went home from the council meeting knowing that the trail was approved and fully funded through completion and that we wouldn't need to keep coming back to fight for it. And I expect that to still be true today because that's how I understand our process works. Um our community is waiting for this project um to enhance our quality of life here in Cupertino. And I urge you to continue moving forward and completing the Regnar Creek Trail as planned and approved. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next we have um Henry Sang, welcome, Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Henry Wu Sang Junior and I'm the president of the Cupertino Library Foundation and a member of the city's, oops, into my thought, you know, of the city's uh ex- uh expansion task force. While I maintain other volunteer roles in the city, tonight's statements do not necessarily reflect those of the other organizations. First, let me acknowledge our sincere gratitude to all the Cupertino library staff who have assumed roles as county disaster service workers for the last three months. We thank you so much for helping us. Tonight, I also want to bring an update and some good news. Next slide, please. As others have commented on, will comment on tonight, there's a great need for extra programming space in Cupertino. Almost all of our programs are held either out of doors or the community hall if they're large. And then in the community hall, uses limit to a hundred uses per year. All the programs could readily use more sessions or longer uh session times. Next slide, please. Remember that over nine hundred thousand visits happened to our library last year and most, most of any library in the system. However, Cupertino's library is second from last in the number of programs we offer. Why? We don't have the space. Here's a list of examples of other programs that we'd like to offer in Cupertino as soon as the expansion is complete. Includes programs for all ages in addition to the ones listed before. And we feel that the planned program room will not only allow us to achieve this, but to do it well. How is that? This is the direct result of a strong partnership between the city staff, the library district, the commission and the community and to the hundreds of hours that were spent in research at other libraries, user with user groups, district planners and consultation with community experts. Next slide. I want to point out a particular issue that we face uh with use of library after COVID nineteen passes. Our senior population is the fastest-growing demographic in Cupertino. Basically, we're not twenty or thirty-year-olds anymore. It used to be. When we finish the library expansion, our senior population will be fifty percent larger than it was in twenty ten, fifty percent. The epidemic is particularly isolating and hard on seniors. They must remain Zoom zombies for much longer than the younger population. This leads to greater social iso- iso- isolation, which experts state is equivalent of smoking a pack a day. Today, getting materials to seniors faces a digital divide challenge, both economic in nature and simply is a tech challenge. By the way, these challenges apply to those of you who are caregivers and support teams for your aging parents. The library expansion should be finishing just as we are about to set our seniors free. The Library Foundation is planning a new series of programs, both virtual and physical, for our adult and senior population. Foundation, the library are doing this in partnership with various organizations throughout our community and valley. Thank you for your attention. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Um I just want to point out that the, you know, we're not talking about the budget for the program room. That's already been approved, as has the trail budget. Um next we are on to Jiong He Ye, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um thank you for the time and I'm speaking to urge the Cupertino City Council to provide a stronger security and privacy protection to the residents of reading the trail than the option in the staff report. The vast majority of the residents want a cement wall, wall taller than seven feet, especially with the surge of homeless population in the public areas. I'm frustr- frustrated by the new proposal of a seven-feet-tall double-sided wood fencing with mass-load vinyl. First, the seven-feet height is not adequate. As we all recognize by by now, passersby can hear our conversations in our rooms. Our windows open much higher than seven feet from the ground and it would not be help, it would not help much for our privacy protection. And also, at seven-feet height, residents have already experienced passersby climb, climb over the fences and intruding into their properties when the trailer was open previously. Second, MLB is not, does not provide a good enough noise protection and it is not a long-term solution either. The vinyl degrades easily and it tends to fall down because it is quite heavy. Who would take the response, maintenance responsibility of opening the wooden fences to fix it? It would be much too much burden to the residents unless the city assumes the maintenance responsibility. Third, in terms of the budget, option D of uh RCT approved by the city council back in last September had already budget allocation of three hundred twenty-five K for the impacted residents, not including the additional budget for Rosano Lane. The option D had a one seventy-five K for the resident fences and the council a- allocated additional budget of a hundred and fifty, if my memory is correct. So for uh on average, for twenty-five households, the available budget already is total almost eleven, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but the staff report only reference uh to sixty K available and they requested two hundred K to meet the additional budget of two sixty K for MLB option, which I think it is not correct. And lastly, and mostly importantly, the city is proposing MLB as the only improvement option without consulting to the residents if it is acceptable. Many residents have requested the concrete wall similar to the Creekside Park entrance or similar material. And as Siraj presented previously, uh for example, precasted cement wall in eight to ten-feet height, for example, may cost somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two thousand, under two thousand per linear foot. Uh with already existing hundred K pro- uh budget, it would require two hundred K more if it is a one fifty K per foot or three hundred K more if it is a two hundred K uh, two hundred per linear foot. I think this is a very reasonable range of budget, especially considering the increased vulnerability of the residents due to the foreseeable homeless encampments on the trail. The sheriff said that they would come and encamp on RCT once it is open. We need a stronger barrier in terms of the material and height to reduce the fire hazard, littering and potential intrusion of our uh fence to our properties. To summarize, I think the um the MLB option proposed by the city staff is not going to protect the residents uh from the privacy and security problems. So I urge the council to provide a direction to provide a stronger mitigation and approve additional budget for for that. And one last comment for the um for many people think that residents would be um also the benefactor of this RCT because in a one, one previous commenter said that we will have direct access to the Wilson Park, which would be a additional like a benefit for us, which is not true. I mean, I just so far, I have never been on the trail. In addition, even if the trail is open, we cannot have direct, I mean, we cannot have door to the trail directly, so we would not have any access to, direct access to the Wilson Park. So with or without the trail, the distance that I have to walk to the Wilson So we don't without the trail, the distance that I have to walk to the Wilson Park is the same because I don't have direct access. And I don't think why people are telling not the, you know, false claims that the residence is not getting.
Oh, yeah, please finish up. You're, you're way over time.
Thank you. I just finished it up. Thanks very much.
Okay, next is Ramola, welcome.
Hello, city council. Good evening. Hi, I hope you all are doing well in these difficult times. Thank you for your time tonight. I'll be brief. I'm a big supporter of the Regnar Creek Trail, and I'm here to check in and encourage progress in the Regnar Creek Trail construction. We all discussed this for several years whether we should approve the construction or not, and it finally was approved last fall. And it was unanimously approved. We had five votes. That was great news to me and several other residents. The city council heard this. I'm here to voice encouragement to the city council to continue making progress so we can start the constructions of this much awaited trail soon. I know I don't need to iterate the benefits to the community. We have gone through this for several years. Uh, I also do note that if we do decide to approve the library extension, we would need this trail to support its parking requirements. I was very happy by the city council unanimously vote last September. Please continue to make progress so to start construction soon for our community's trail. I hope you continue to do your bit to complete what we started several years ago. Thank you for your hard work and thank you for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mooney. Welcome, Mooney.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, dear mayor and council, uh, my name is Munir Madhipatla, resident of Cupertino. I'm also on a bike and pedestrian commission. I'm speaking here as a resident representing myself. A recent newsletter from an advocacy group called Bike Walk Cupertino has lots of misinformation about myself on the commission and my fellow commissioners and council members. I want to clarify the misinformation. I joined the bike commission as a passionate biker wanting to help improve the safety for our residents. I bike annually about two thousand miles and climb about, you know, a hundred fifty thousand feet. This year, due to COVID nineteen shelter in place, I've already biked, you know, two thousand two hundred miles, right? Climbed modular road yesterday, and I joined this meeting earlier, you know, from foot, on the foot hill while biking at Stanford. I learned about Bike Walk Cupertino advocacy group in two thousand sixteen and used to have hundred percent respect for what they were doing. I used to get regular newsletters as as a subscriber. After I got on the bike commission in two thousand eighteen, I was approached by one of their board members to speak in support of Regnar Creek Trail. I said, I would speak only if I feel compelled about the project, not because, you know, someone nudged. Interestingly, I stopped receiving their newsletters after my refusal to speak in support of Regnar Creek Trail. I was surprised and disappointed with their vindictive approach towards their subscribers. My respect for them dropped from hundred percent to about seventy percent. I got the latest newsletter forwarded to me by a friend. This one took their vindictiveness to a new level. I would not call that a newsletter. Instead, I would term it as a smear blog. I encourage you to read it so that you know how to treat them in future. Because of this smear blog, my respect for this lobbying group has dropped to hundred, zero percent. I'm glad that, you know, my fellow commissioner Gerard Astridback designed from their board. It appears this misinformation is making it rounds through other smear blog, smear blogging entities like Cupertino Matters and Cupertino Majority, you name it. For the record, I'm not an anti-bike and trails resident. I want to support projects that delivers value to residents for their top, for their tax dollars being spent. As a matter of fact, I support the class four bike lane on McClellan Road, even though that means I lose on-street parking in front of my home. While I support sensible bike and walk projects in the city, I refuse to be a puppet of some lobbying entity. Unlike some, I don't run away from the challenge either. With that said, I leave the decision of funding Regnar Creek Trail during this budget crisis in your capable lands. Thank you.
Wow, okay, thank you, Mooney. Um, next we have caller five five eight seven on the phone. Welcome.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jerry. I'm a Cupertino resident. Um, I'm a driver. I'm a biker. I work in the city. And I'm calling in support of the bike trail. Um, I, uh, too, have been following this issue for a number of years. Um, similarly frustrated to a caller that it's, uh, who we heard earlier, that it's taken several years uh, from the time that this was initially brought up and even months since it was fully approved. Um, the points I'd like to to raise, uh, we're building a bike trail. We're not building an airport or a highway. Uh, if you have to hear your fellow neighbors talking, uh, as they may bike along the bike trail, uh, that's sort of part of living in a community and living in a city. Um, I myself, uh, am my property, but a city of Cupertino Park. I frequently hear my fellow uh, citizens laughing, running, screaming, whatever they might do there, uh, and that's sort of part of living here. And so, um, yeah, my point is, uh, that, uh, you know, I, I, I would really encourage the residents who do live in, uh, in these houses to think about what they, what they want to have in their community and what they value. Uh, and if they don't value, um, you know, living with other residents, then it's perhaps best that they uh, leave the city and move into some, uh, faraway, uh, land without people. If, if, if really, uh, the objection is your fellow citizens biking to the library or to Wilson Park. Uh, finally, with regard to the, again, the proposed upgrade to build a wall, uh, uh, you know, um, I don't think that's a prudent, uh, use of our budget, given that we just heard how uh, how much of a shortfall the city is facing this year. Uh, and moreover, uh, should the council decide that's a good use of funds, I will encourage my, uh, neighbors who are but this Cupertino Park and the many others in Cupertino to, uh, since the city is paying for walls, uh, on city properties, I will ask that the city fund a wall on my property, and ideally it will be twenty feet tall and be made of iron and have a turret on the top to deter any possible citizens from being nearby. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we have Kiran Farshnaya, welcome.